We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Everybody who would like to stand up. Before our prayer this evening, we're gonna have a moment of silence for a student of Grand County High School that died unexpectedly this weekend. His name is George. We're gonna have a moment of silence for him with a national ad. Gordon Miller, Nashville, ladies and gentlemen, prayer.
Our Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity, Lord, to be here tonight, Lord, to do the business of schools. My parents will be with us, Lord, as we say, here tonight to talk, discuss these issues if we make the right decisions for the students in our county. We pray, Lord, to be with the family of that young man that died unexpectedly this weekend, Lord. I pray just watch over them, hold them up during this time of grief. Lord, for others, Lord, that may be going through other things from now wherever, I pray just be with them. I pray always to be with all the students here in our school, Lord. I pray just help them, Lord, to learn, help them to do the things they need to do here, Lord, with the teachers. I pray to be with them. Lord, I pray you just continue to watch over us, Lord. Blessings as we go through our night, Lord. I pray to cure us from sins. Blessings keep us in just name of prayer. Amen.
Tonight, the ladies on our pledge, we have students from Tracy City Elementary. We have Callie Parsons and Zachary Bray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If we didn't have Miss Stevens and Mr. Fugan come on up for us, we've got, you saw on your agendas, it's a grant we received, our school received, it's Fuel Up, Fuel Up to Play 60. That is a grant that's put out, it's, I think it's the National Dairy Council, the NFL, and some other partners. What it is, it's an in-school nutrition program and physical activity grant. And if you look, if you do any research on childhood obesity and the physical condition of our children, this is, it's very alarming. They say, you know, the research says that these, this might be the first generation that doesn't outlive their parents. So, you know, the wellness, the physical wellness of our children is something extremely important to us. This is gonna be a wonderful grant for Palmer Elementary and Swiss Memorial School. And we have Miss Amanda Rooney, who teaches physical education at those schools. And we're very excited about this, and of course, you can go through your packets, but it's, it's gonna be a great thing for us, and we're just, we're very grateful to have it, and we appreciate all the hard work that you all did in making this happen for us. And also, we have, I don't think she's here tonight, but for those of you that weren't here last night, our coordinated school health director, Mary Jo Gallagher, she was awarded the regional director for that, for that job. And she's made some tremendous improvements in that program over the last three years, and she's been a great asset to Grand County Schools all, through all her years of service, but especially these last few with the coordinated school health. So when you see her, just congratulate her, and tell her you appreciate what she's done. Okay, now we have a check. Yeah, that's the important thing.
It's in the bank already. I'm Fay Beach with the Southeast Dairy Association, and on behalf of, we call it Suda, it does have an I in it, but we don't pronounce it, and I'd give you odds way back yonder it was called Suda, but we sort of changed it around. But the money for these grants comes from Suda and the Tennessee dairy farmers. So if you know a dairy farmer here in Tennessee, be sure and thank them for the support that they give schools. National Dairy Council's been doing this for a hundred years now. So we've been very invested in the health and wellness of our children, and if you take all the grants, the breakfast in the classroom, and the two Fuel Up to Play 60 grants from last fall, you all have gotten $12,000 in grants. I will say this, you guys know this, the grant period is open right now. So it closes on June 15th. So every other school that has not applied for the Fuel Up grant may do so, and it's up to $4,000. So I'd love to come back over here with another, well, $13,000, $14,000 check, I give you. But thank you for your support. I really appreciate it, and if dairy farmers can help you in any other way, just let us know. Thank you. Thanks for your help. You wanna hold that in the middle? Yeah. No, 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 they see me all the time.
Okay, moving right along these. I have a motion to approve the consent. I saw Lou, motion by Mr. Melo, second by Ms. Anderson to approve the consent of the dinner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, with the new business, item A, is the approval to purchase Chromebooks for board and board secretary to have paperless board tabs. Certainly, we should have done it years ago. We talked about it last night in the workshop. These are very inexpensive nowadays. I think you can get a Chromebook, put out by Google, it's Windows-based, and everything for around $200. So we've got money in line, five-minute line with the board line, uh, board budget. I have a motion to approve that. Any more discussion or questions?
I made it.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Gallagher, to purchase Chromebooks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item B, you wanna talk about that, Drew?
Um, yes, I have, Ms. Linda approached me today. We've been talking for a couple of weeks now about Tracy City Elementary's flooring situation is all carpet, and it's very old carpet, it's completely worn out. They've been doing some fundraising to try to raise the money for the materials for that flooring to be replaced, and they actually have the money to purchase the materials. But the labor side, it's gonna cost a lot of money to, well, it, we don't have the resources within our maintenance department to even pull the carpet up. It, it takes special equipment. Mr. Shelly's over there somewhere.
I hear you.
Uh, there he is. He can talk more specific about that. But what he had done was to get an estimate of how much it would cost if we contracted that out, and that's what you have in front of you. We would have to get three bids, but we just wanted to get a rough idea of how much it would cost to have that done.
I, I, I put all this together, and I took the sheet, the material sheet on the last page, I get named that, she's done on the second page. Material sheet is $2,000, uh, I mean roughly, it's gonna be around around $2,041. That's the, well, actually, $2,223.25. That's with the VCT tile, the adhesive, and the universal floor repairer. And that's just the material. And then the labor, I started with, like, it's on the second page, and it goes to the, the labor, how much it takes to glue it down, to, you know, pull the stuff, the existing carpet up, the skin cotton existing, rough concrete and stuff, you know, down through the line in the next page, and ends up being at $77,515. And they get, they take the carpet up, which is on, glued down carpet, very similar to what was in here. And it's glued, you gotta get the glue up, concrete, and so you've got to prepare the concrete, put maybe glue it back down, and then put the tile back down on top of it. That's the labor for it. So the $75, $16, plus the material, which is 22, 23, 25, ends up being $97, 56, 16. That's just one quote. You know, we could get other quotes, and we're gonna have to, because it could be, you know, less, or it could be more than that.
Ms. Linda, how much have you all raised?
I think we're around $5,000, what we have. I mean, we can pay some toward, toward the, you know, and, and our total has not come in yet from the cookie dough order that we've done, but I'm guessing around $5,000 or maybe a little more. So I'm just, you know, I know we don't probably have this much, but we have at least half of it.
How much of an area does Jeff is this?
It's, I, I said roughly $3,000, but it tells me right here it's 27, 2,430, I mean, 2,734 feet.
Also, when I, when the guy from Home Depot came up there, I asked him to give me an estimate with carpet just under where the computers are, and then have the rest of it with tile, and he said, actually, that would be cheaper than going all tile with some good indoor/outdoor carpet. And he didn't send us, that's what Mr. Shelly and I were looking at.
I didn't see, I mean, I blew it.
He didn't do that.
I didn't come out there with, with you did.
What do you think about that, Mr. Shelly?
I think, well, that glued down carpet, it's like three foot by three foot. And, you know, the thing about it is, if you do tear it up, you can tear it three foot out and put another three-foot piece in there. But, I mean, we're getting rid of carpet because, number one, it's, it's, it just holds all that trash out, it's nice. And that's been there since, I, I guess it's been there since 1979. And it's got ribs in it, and we've had people out clean it, you know how, it's real white right now, because it's getting quite thin down. But there's not much still in the foundation on that.
Would you prefer to just have all tile?
That would be fine. However we can get it, anything's better than what we have.
Well, I appreciate you raising that, but, I mean, that's a big step in our operation.
How long will it take to put it in, did I give you the estimate?
I don't think it's, you know, this is, it doesn't every day, you know, I mean, it's
just gonna be a sound project.
I would think so, yeah.
Before this year, before the budget year ends?
I don't think, I bet it would take them a week to do that, to have it to one feet.
So, I mean, that, that's, the, the price of materials seems in line with
Right, $3 a square foot.
Labor seems a little, are they, like, moving all the cabins out too?
Yeah, they're charging $232 for that. Heavy moving furniture for a square foot. There's not that much in there, really.
Any cost to build a jail inmate except for the carpet up?
Not when there are kids around.
Well, I mean, kids wouldn't be there a long time. It's a project for 12 percent.
Oh, you not having?
They won't let me have the men inmates because I'm a woman.
Well, I mean, you know, we can do something about that, but...
But would they have the equipment to get that glued down carpet up?
Oh, no. You gotta have a-
I think they just try the carpet up, and that's the big hurdle right there.
Well, they gotta, I mean, what I understand is a machine that comes in-
Takes the carpet up?
It's like a knife blade, vibrate knife blade.
Can you not rent those machines somewhere?
We have, yes, yeah, but, you know, when we pulled this up, I had that, that John Deere tractor thing, and it's tied to the carpet trying to pull it up. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not that easy, because it's glued down to the carpet.
And it's been there since 70.
Well...
It's like pretty sweet deal, isn't it?
Well, it's $3 a square foot. I know there's some other floor that you wailed down, it's like, I would know, it's $7 a square foot. Tile is probably, you know, probably a dollar each, eight tiles, and then $2 for the large I get.
And you're, you're just retiring currency of business out, or are you retiring currency to go with that bid that you got?
Well, I, I guess you're just really wanting to know how much my costs, because I have to get at least their quotes. So I don't know-
Well, what we really need is for you all to approve to pay for whatever money we don't have to pay, because Ms. Linda's not gonna be able to raise $10,000 before the end of summer. So, I mean, it's not in the budget, but, I mean, there's money in the board line, so
If you spend that whole, your whole amount of money, does that complete your school fund?
It will do all my fundraising fund, yes. We've done all kinds of fundraising this year trying to, to have enough money. I knew we had enough money for the supplies, I just didn't know if I had enough for the labor. And then when, of course, seeing this tonight, I'm like, oh my goodness, it's gonna run us tight, you know, probably we'll be short some, so...
You've got more than enough to buy the material.
Yes, yes, we've got enough to do the materials.
I think probably that Tracy City Elementary paid the materials, and the board paid the wages, and they can use the rest of their money, and I think you can complete all of your money.
Well, we've applied for the South Cumberland grant, and of course, you won't know about that until later on. I don't know if we'll get it or not, but we're hoping to buy some new bookshelves and some new tables to go in there, and those tables are off pieces, and things like that with that grant money.
I second your motion. We have a motion, Rich Paul, to second by Mr. Melo, to fund the labor, you said?
Yeah.
Fund the labor on the project Tracy City. Any more questions or discussion? Are you gonna tie a shirt if you-
Yeah, just as soon as I can. I don't think you can fake whatever they did at school, didn't set up any, you know, as far as, like, summer school, or, I don't know if they're gonna have summer school, or say if you can't.
You can try and get three bids, correct?
Three quotes. I can get one from another, another kind of-
We have to have three bids.
I need you to really consider what kind of work that each one of them do, you know, but even though you wanna try to double the load again, I know that it's not necessarily always the best bid.
We went through, well, I mean, if you see who we went through right here.
Well, at Home Depot, I'm sure they contracted out the same-
Right, and they backed us up. I mean, they have a lot of, and we have another place low, we're doing the same thing. Just, it just, it cost them $35 to get that quote, that, that, and then off, you know, there's another one that, that we can get, that would be, we, we're gonna get contracted. Yeah, we don't have to double the loads, we, we did cheap.
I just want to invite you, I'm trying to be a, we do get the professional type jobs, you know, just somebody that's coming in there, if you want to get the job, the job.
It'd be a floor first. Prayers that they have a good floor, you know, most of them talk, that being-
Any more questions? If you have any, if there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to the next item, Mr. Davis, you, did you have a comment about surplus lighting?
Yes, I do, Chairman. I was on the athletic committee with Chairman Mike Gates when we started trying to get our new lights for the baseball field. That's been about a year ago. When we met with the TBA, Coke Jones, and, and we met the TBA, we met with Squatch Electric, we got, when we got approval through the board to get the new lights, we even met out there with you, Chairman Bister, with, with all the contractors for the bid, bid process. The bid went through, person got in. I went out there numerous times, watching them put the lights in, take the old lights down. I talked to the, the owner of the business several times, and then he said the lights had been put in the, the mighty building. That, when the lights were finished, the lights were up, on March the 9th, I received a call from Daniel Craftery, who is the mayor of Palmer. He said to me, he said he would like to have at least 18 lights. And I told him at that time, because he's my son, I said, before, have this above board to contact Chairman Bister, and I backed out of it at that time. Now, no time, from the time we started a year ago, no one else contacted me or Mike Gates, and I went and talked to Mike Gates between last board meeting and this board meeting, and he said no one had ever contacted him wanting those lights. And the only person that has contacted me, which I've helped him to contact you, is the mayor of Palmer. With that said, I make a motion at this time to give Palmer the 18 lights. And I have another motion after this here.
Before we go into further, the mayor did contact me and told me exactly what Mr. Davis just said, that he would like to, if, he said if we didn't have those obligated, he would like to have 18 of them, and he told me what he wanted to do, get the league, started to get involved. And I told him, I said, that's fine, I said, I don't know that anybody else has asked for them, and then after that, I got a call that Coffee County was interested in purchasing the lights, because I think their new middle school, they're putting tennis court down there, they're starting a middle school tennis team, and they're gonna buy them, put down there and use. And I told the gentleman, I said, well, I said, I think we've got, those are already accounted for. And then we had the workshop, and, you know, then the meeting, where Mr. Melo, Mr. Melo said they need, or would like to have with Tracy City. But, and then I think you said, we talked about it months ago, and, and I don't remember. Now, I'm not saying we didn't talk about it, because I forget a lot of stuff, and it could slip my mind, but, but I did, I did tell Mayor Craftery I had no problem with him getting 18 lights, but David, he, he talked with Mr. Davis, because like I said, I had no idea we had, you know, plans for them.
How many lights are there?
There's probably, there's 30 good lights, all right? I don't know exactly how many that they took now, but we have taken some of the ballots out of those before all, you know, right when all this happened, because we, we put them in the softball. Drexler ran up there, because he's got two or three out, and it's not above, it's a ballot, so we've got to get up there and pick the ballot. But there are approximately 30 good ones, but there are parts that are still, the canisters, the hoods for the lights, and stuff like that, that could possibly be put back together. They, they big banged them up a little bit because of all that on the crane, and I want to think there's about 46 altogether, when they took them down, but that, we got, we got like-
Forty-five, I think. So you think probably 30 of them, and then we got 90 of them?
I think there are 30 still sitting there, wired in on the cover books, I think they banged up, there's the glass shield, there's the hood, still all the different wires that come out. But it's there 30.
I'd like to second Mr. Davis' motion.
Before we thought about that, just a second. It was three or four months ago that we had all discussed that Tracy had come and made some of the lights, and we did, we talked about it. And, you know, I would have no objection giving these lights to Palmer, I wouldn't be right if I didn't get the right for them. But if we give these lights to Palmer and we leave our football, what's our Grand County boys, junior varsity that plays on that football? That's part of Grand County School, and you've got, what, 200 kids that play out there, 50 cheerleaders, I mean, kids from all over, from Palom, from Alton, from even Palmer, Tracy, I mean, kids from Monteagle, kids from all over this county, go and play at Tracy, they play football. Or if we give it to Palmer, you know, then we've got Palmer kids. They don't even have the organization out there. It's an overflow practice field. You know, I'm not saying let's take these kids, this from Palmer, but you kind of gotta look at it as where is the school's business, kids, you know, what do they have to use them up? I mean, if we, if we put them out at Palmer, there's gonna be, what, 10 kids using it? I mean, you know, they just don't have anything right now like that. And the mayor even said that, as of right now, my understanding is, if I'm wrong, but he doesn't even have the money to put them up right now. I mean, that means they're gonna be in storage, you know, for ages. And who knows if they get rolled, or, you know, whatever, and then we don't get to use them yet.
He's gonna put them up.
Does he have a ton?
No, he's gonna put them up.
He's received some, he told me, from, I think it's Croft Road, from-
Yes.
From City of Marion County donated some as well.
He's got to put up some poles, and he's gonna get the pole, but also-
Well, that's my thought on it, and then, you know, also, if you look right now during baseball during the summer, you know, it's still daylight right now. We've got our football players that they can't practice at this time, it's already dark. You know, they've got to have those times. Right now, if you're practicing baseball, you know, you got sunlight. It's a different season, you know, you got daylight savings, like in 2020.
Did we get a feel for how many they needed though?
He wanted 18.
Hold on, but do we get a feel for how many they needed though?
I know when I spoke to him, he had said that not with the minimum-
No, that's not true.
Of, to make-
That is not true. You offered him nine. You don't have any authority to offer him anything.
I asked him-
You have one vote on this board. You have no authority to be offering-
And I didn't-
I have one vote, you have one vote. You shouldn't be offering anybody anything.
I didn't. I asked him what would be the minimum, I had the text message. I asked him what would be the minimum that we could get both Palmer's ball field lit up and Tracy's.
My motion is the same thing.
I never had no agreement on that, but...
Well, I'll weigh in a little bit. Number one, the, the children that she's talking about, I've had kids play out there, but they're not, the only kids that are sanctioned by us is the junior high ball. We, we don't, we don't sanction none of the Pee-Wee ball. It's not part of the school system.
Do they carry it around the county, right?
No, they same as our- It's South Grundy. They're not Jackets.
It's the same as your Indian robe. It really, it's really not a hard game, it's really beyond-
I think it's quite silly myself, the whole thing.
I said, if we give the lights to Palmer, then we don't make a say if we can get some lights to put out at Tracy and not in these other fields.
Well, no.
It's not fair to give one and all the other.
But we, we have lights at Tracy. You know, we played for how many years out there now? Three, is this the third season we play football out there?
And they've got like 60 out of 40.
Well, it's always been, because they consistently play it all throughout, people in high school, move out here, and still play games out there.
It's really not a hard game, as far as I know, I really am amazed at that. If they haven't been intentional for them, that's good.
And that's the, the conversation I had with him was, you know, he's, he's attempting to, to get the program up and running. I mean, he doesn't have lights, Tracy City does have lights right now. You know, I, I know you all have done some studies and had his year come out, I mean, that's something, we've got a budget, we can live with that, especially for people.
Question remains, excuse me, question here remains, while we go to the rest of the lights. We're just leaving them in system, there's no reason, there's no reason, any idea?
I said that we could give the rest of the lights to Tracy, and then maybe technically get Tracy some new lights, we'll have to replace that other. Then both fields, you know, both fields can be reopened. I mean, that's, that's the main thing, it's about kids, it's not, you know, trying to get both fields laid up.
Nice, exactly right, for the children.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any, any more discussion? No thoughts?
So is that motion to add, do we need to make another motion about giving the rest of the lights to Tracy and even them, trying to get them new lights off them?
We, well, we vote on this one, and then, depending on how it shakes out, you can make that one, but... Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
I got one other motion, motion carries. I make the, the lights out there had large steel, uh, ramps. Um, each light that they took off, they didn't need the, those, uh.
Scaffolding.
The scaffolding, the, so they took those down also, um, and they're at the, the scaffolding, and it's a lot of steel there. And I wanted to make a motion to give all that, the steel, to our welding department here at Grundy County High School. And for them to use in their trade.
I think, I, I think really that should belong to them anyway, because it's, they belong to them. This school brought it, first school brought it, or is it, they were trying to get it somewhere?
That's crap right now, that's three cents a hundred, so it ain't worth selling it.
Do they use any of those other lights that they took down, do they use any of that on the, the softball field?
No, they, and that's something that we need to discuss, but we agreed, uh, and I didn't have anything to do with the softball field. But with, all the, the lights for the softball field, the lights are fifteen years old or older. Uh, they were supposed to change all the bugs down, we bought the bugs.
Yeah, we've got.
Well, the bugs, when Squatchy Electric came out and replaced them, they just replaced the bugs that were out, they did not replace the bugs. That was their agreement, was we thought that they were gonna place, replace all the bugs, they just replaced the bugs that were out. So we're sitting here with twelve hundred dollars of bugs.
My question, we need to retain some of those lights for parts.
I, I have some, I have a violence, a few can, that's why I've got it up there, and I thought Squatchy Valley would, uh, change the violence down, they won't, they won't touch the violence, they'll change the, the bug. But I mean, you know, we can, we can get it down, we got people in, in county that has a, a, a deal to get something back, so.
Well, normally if Sam's not busy, he'll come do it anyway.
Well, he won't change balance.
Yeah, but he'll change, he, he probably, as well.
He would, yeah.
Just call Sam and tell him, and then.
If he would let me up there, we'd, you know, I don't know how that liability is, it's trouble.
If somebody's qualified and do it safely, replace it. Are they out still too? Or we still have some?
I believe there's two vials, he, he, he's replaced the bugs, there were six, so he.
So he's got, we got two that's got issues with the hardware.
Right, yeah, and I have more than that, old vials to replace.
It wouldn't be much to get somebody to do that.
No, I can get, uh, a man that has everything back, that is a license insured, but.
The metal, was it, was it the mounting part there?
No, I was thinking, you can actually stand the wall on this platform up there that they took down. And it has all the braces and stuff that, that hooks the platform into the hole, and all that is just pure steel.
Make your eyes fall.
Hey, that's good at all.
And you weld in the part where you want.
That's, that is theirs.
We got a motion and a second, I think. Well, we agreed that, go ahead and give.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, just go ahead and take, take ownership of it. Ms. Anderson, you had, you want to?
I want to take a motion to, um, give whatever lights that, um, Palmer, I think, that were home, unless, I know there was some discussion there, but, it all had to give to the Tracy office, and check and see how much it would cost to replace the lights.
I'll say. Any discussion, any question? You get that, Ms. Mc? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, this, uh, I apologize, we, we redid the agenda after the workshop last night, I didn't print page two for everybody, but, uh, spoke with Coach Shedd today, and he's here tonight to talk about the letters, those included in our packets. Um, Coach Shedd, you wanna come on up?
Sure.
Just tell us a little bit about this, uh, Wayne County Team Camp.
Hi, last year we went to the Wayne County Team Camp, and, uh, we had a great time. And it really helped us get away from all the distractions here at home, to get away and be together and work together. We really did a lot of growing and a lot of bonding while we were down there, and it was really good for us. I think it really helped us progress on up through the rest of the summer and be ready for our season.
Tell us, join the details about what this camp entails.
Uh, this camp is, it runs Sunday through Wednesday, June fifth to the eighth. Uh, we'll be there three nights, four days, three nights. We're gonna have a bus take us down there, drop us off, and then come back to us only, to save on expense of the driver and all that. Um, the camp, they give us three meals, plus the lodging, uh, and we get ten games, and see these people we don't, we won't ever see any other time. Uh, so that's good in that aspect, and it's gonna cost us about twenty-four hundred dollars. Which, when you look at other camps around, to drive to, is that mine or looks from one, to get the same amount of games with no meals, and driving there and back every day, it's gonna be eighteen hundred. So this is us together, staying in rooms together, the girls, and then, uh, our chaperones staying with them, and then them bonding and growing through that time that we went to get any other time.
Great idea.
Okay, so I, and you're paying for the whole thing, right?
Absolutely. We're going back for the driver to take us down there and back, I'm covering the twenty-four hundred, because we started a fundraiser now, um, and I'm waiting on one to get here too. Uh, we're doing a barbecue supper on the twentieth, um, thinking it's a eight dollars piece, I've got someone that's, uh, gonna do the, do enough food to feed four hundred people for six hundred dollars, so it's a dollar fifty a piece is what we're being charged. So we're selling them for eight, so we should be okay on that. Um, we've got the Kenway Field Day concession stand, which is coming tomorrow, I would have to, I would have to forget. Uh, we, last year we made about seven hundred dollars and we ran out of everything. So I made sure, I went yesterday to Sam's and tracked by, make sure we had enough for it. Um, and we're also gonna do an envelope donation at the dinner, and, you know, if you wanna make a donation of ten bucks, you go get envelope number ten and put the money in. And that setup, we'll have a hundred and fifty envelopes, if we get all those envelopes filled, it'll be eleven thousand dollars. And then we've got discount cards that the company's in the process of getting sponsors, that will say, you know, you go to a pizza or somewhere around and buy one pizza and get a pizza for it. Those will be twenty bucks a piece that they'll sell, but we'll make fifteen dollars off the each card. So we're in line right now that through these three fundraisers, not counting the field day, we should, if the girls meet the goals, about ten ticket, dinner tickets a piece, and ten discount cards a piece, and we get the envelopes taken care of, that puts us at about seventeen thousand dollars. So we can easily cover this camp and the rest of our camps. And then, and I told parents, if we can get that done, they're not gonna pay for anything next year at all, well, I'll pay for everybody, to help them out as well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this basketball field.
Second.
Motion, my Mr. Fosker second, my Mr. Meadows to approve, hoping I share. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay, the only, Coach Shedd, one of the things we talked about, I think, before, we had to put in some extra dollars, and do you, you just looking?
I tried last year, I've had to get Mr. Shelly to find out the seating height, 'cause that was one of the big things that, when I was asking around, I hadn't met Mr. Shelly yet. And so when I got here last year, busy, I asked around, no one could tell me exact numbers, uh, and that's a big part of it. I think, from what I remember last year to get, uh, one of the trackable goals like we have now, I think it was like eight thousand dollars of gold. Now, we can get the ones that just mount on the wall, and will slide flat, instead of raise up, those are cheaper.
I think we'd want.
Right, I mean, it would be better if they raised up and completely out the way, yeah. So I have more of assemblies, you know, 'cause you have, you have to have that question in there, you don't want all the parents sitting on one side looking across at these goals hanging down on the wall. Uh, but now, I hadn't, I hadn't looked lately at that, because I didn't know what the, you know, what the budget or anything like, or something like that was. And another reason why I hadn't, I mean, Miss Kinsey talked about this, and then Mr. Shelly, we would really love to get that full payment. And so, I know, it's, he said it'd been mentioned, so, you know, I didn't wanna ask for too much, because, you know, to me, I think we help our kids sense a pride in the program, if that gym looked at, which is why we did some of the painting and stuff this year, trying to, trying to improve it, trying to instill some pride in the game into their program. And so I think, you know, when we get that forward on, I think it's gonna look really, really good, and that's just gonna help boost our kids' pride and self-esteem about playing that sport, guys and girls, uh, which will really help us. So that's one of the reasons why I didn't even thought of anything else about the. Because I, I didn't want to come across as something. I appreciate you guys approving that, Chair.
You're lucky.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Well, I got, I got something I need to say.
Let Ms. Phillips come up first, you might weigh up any more.
I just wanted to thank you for having agendas available, uh, tonight, and with the, the fact that board, board agendas and the materials are gonna now be available digitally, how will that, how will that be available to the public?
They'll still need to request a copy, just like word policy.
And it'll just come to email then?
Yeah, or they can pick it up, just their preference, depends on their preference, we can print it for a fee.
Sure, sure, but if it's available digitally, it'll be available.
Yes, but they, they will need to request it, or otherwise we can help.
Sure, all right, thank you.
Do they have to request it every month, or do they like say, hey, I wanna hear it more?
Every month, just like the policy says.
With the newspaper, everybody?
Okay. The newspaper?
I mean, I think they, they used to get the packets too. I just.
Chris, not?
Well, my one thing is, is there any way that we can like move the workshops to, like, start going to different schools? So we can like walk around and maybe get the principals involved and point out some of the things that need to be addressed at their school? I mean, we got eight buildings around here, and we don't ever go to nothing.
Yeah, we used to, and Mr. Gallagher, you know more about this than I do, we had those, like, I think, when we'd take a Saturday, like, maybe we'd meet at Palmer and go through it.
I think one time they had four meetings.
Yeah, we done that for a little while, uh.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Whole meeting is.
Right.
Well, that's why I was just saying the workshop, you know, so that way you can still maintain an order here, but.
Right.
As board members, you know, 'cause, like, I don't go to Tracy, uh, or Pelham, you know, or Door. So the principals can say, hey, you know, uh, this wall here may be painted, or, you know, just.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can, we can talk about, of course, and August, the director will, well, it's, she'll email it out to Mr. Erst and teach plan, and then present it to us in August. And that may be something we can work on, uh, going forward, is rotating our workshops to, that each building, and each, each school can kind of do a little presentation at the workshop, and we can go through and see what, you know, what we can do. I, I wouldn't have promised that, we've always done various, for super location, but.
But as long as they have.
Pay the, right.
I, I just wanna say one thing, if a principal has a concern, they need to, they need to blue talk it, you know, if there's a maintenance issue, does that kind of sound like what you were saying? If there's a maintenance issue, they need to follow protocol.
Well, I, I just.
I don't think there's a reason to go point it out to a board member, I mean.
Well, not, not necessarily just for maintenance, I mean, you walk around your home and make sure everything, I mean, we're, we're supposed to be managed with the, the buildings and, you know.
I mean, I'm okay with it, but I'm just saying that, you know, there's a procedure they follow.
Right.
I mean, so I don't think that, you know, if Miss Glenda has an issue, I don't expect her to wait until it's her month.
Oh, no, no, no.
I mean, those issues, if they're real issues, need to be addressed.
Yeah, no, I, I, I would hope she wouldn't wait for her turn.
Well, if it's the, if it's the showcase their school, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's all, all well and good.
I mean, even if we just take, you know, we need to do it every month, you know, uh, every other month, just, just so we can walk around and, you know, as a group, look at our bills.
Yeah, just let's think, well, sure. Anything else? Have a motion to the chair?
Someone second.
Paulus, Chris Gallagher, all in favor, say aye.